This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Public Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, as we do with every meeting, we allow for the opportunity for public participation. If anyone here would like to speak, provide feedback, ask questions of the board or of the superintendent, we can do that now. You can find Dan Goldman over here and he can give you a card. Is anybody here who would like to speak? Would any of Allison's children like to speak?
[laughing]
I'll take that as a no.
We'll go no.
Seeing none, we'll move on. You all have had a chance to review tonight's agenda. Any questions, comments, or edits to the agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, you've also had an opportunity to review the minutes of the March 25th meeting, which of course included the executive budget proposal and budget hearing. Any question with regards to those minutes? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Carrie Lynn. All those in favor? Next up, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan for the approval of the... Oh, don't somebody do the approval first. I apologize. Next up, we have the approval of administrator tenure recommendations, two of them, one for Dr. Allison Rio and the second one for Ashley Edwards. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Esther?
Moved by Karen.
Yeah, moved by second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we turn over the presentation?
Yes. So before you do that though, the children with Dr. Rio have a very quick survey. Now's the time. When I said I would cue you, that's like...
[laughing]
In a way. Dr. Rio has grounded them all and is very unhappy. So we'll ask Dr. Rio if you could go up to the podium, please, with Mr. Davis and
Dr. Lee. And while they're walking up, I'll also explain that Ashley Edwards, also receiving tenure, who we're super excited about, wants her children to be able to do the wave for her also.
But not everybody could be here tonight, so she is going to be recognized along with
the other tenure recipients at the June, the first meeting in June. We're super, super excited for this appointment for Dr. Rio and would like to tell you a little bit about her and the reasons for this recommendation. First, she has a bachelor's degree in childhood special education from St. John Fisher, a master's in literacy also from St. John Fisher, and her doctorate in teaching and curriculum from the University of Rochester. Certifications in special education, pre-k, kindergarten, grades one through six. Literacy birth through grade six as a school district leader, as a school building leader. She was a consultant teacher, self-contained teacher, and ELA coach in the Rochester City School District before joining French Road as a literacy coach in 2013. Became our assistant director of humanities in 2016, the interim principal of French Road in 2017, and then the principal at French Road beginning in 2018, and began this work in 2021 as assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. She is, as I wrote to you and the community should hear, a rare and remarkable leader whose intellect, integrity, and impact have elevated every aspect of the district's work. She brings exceptional intelligence to her role, not only in terms of deep content knowledge and strategic insight, but also through her intuitive understanding of people and systems. She possesses a rare ability to think analytically and act emphatically, empathetically, I'm sorry, and emphatically, I'm sure, but empathetically, making decisions that are both wise and deeply human. Her passion for meeting the needs of every child is evident in everything she does, from policy decisions to individual conversations. She consistently champions an inclusive and equity-driven approach to teaching and learning that is improving outcomes for all students, which is always her focus. Her energy is endless. Whether mentoring principals, collaborating with instructional coaches, or leading a professional learning system session, Allison approaches each task with contagious enthusiasm and an unshakable commitment to excellence. She's kind, humble, and grounded, which makes her not only an extraordinary leader, but also a beloved and trusted colleague. She's helped cultivate a deeply positive and collaborative culture in central office and across our leadership team. She leads with generosity and respect, creating spaces where people feel safe to learn, contribute, and grow. Her mentorship of principals has been transformative, helping to build leadership capacity across the district in ways that will benefit students for years to come. Her leadership is not only admirable, it is undeniably effective. We are already seeing the results of her work in approved student outcomes, stronger instructional practices, and a renewed sense of purpose among instructional leaders as well. Under Allison's guidance, our curriculum and instruction are more responsive, more rigorous, and more inclusive than ever before. For all of these reasons and many more, I am so honored to have recommended her for tenure, to work with her each and every day, to consider Allison an integral member of our cabinet and leadership team in this district in so many ways. Also, a pretty amazing mom and wife to not just one, but two sets of twins. I know this always comes up, but awesome four kids in the back and her husband Chad. We really appreciate the sacrifice that all of you make as a family for Allison and for all of us in the district. So, Dr. Rio, congratulations.
Should we get the family picture?
Yes, family. Always family.
So said Nick, Julie, Carly, Aiden, so happy to have you. My husband Chad as well.
Yay! As Dr. McGowan noted, we will have the opportunity to recognize Ashley and a number of other people at our June meeting. We look forward to doing that as well. A great group of people this year receiving tenure. A nice positive upbeat presentation like that must be followed by a budget presentation. So we'll learn some more about the budget, even though I think there's not a lot new. We'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGowan.
No, as I've said to you, it is what it is and we are where we are. So let me walk through that, but not any significant changes, or really not any changes. From our last conversation at the last meeting where we said essentially we were giving you the proposal, but hopeful that a state budget would be adopted between now and then by their deadline by law, March 31st, which has not been adhered to. We're not even close and apparently that is at a standstill. We do not expect that number to change our budget, though. We're projecting our state aid to be what the governor proposed, and it's unlikely that it would be less than that. So we feel comfortable moving ahead with a budget proposal at this point. Certainly, by the end of the month, if there was a budget and we need to make adjustments, we would ask you to come back and do so. But this is the budget proposal that stands right now and we expect it to be the budget proposal. Few of the guidelines that we start out with, as you know at the beginning of this process, is to really look at the need for sustaining revenue. When we start programs and support what we are doing here, we need to make sure that we can continue to support that. We're struggling in that area, I'll mention it later, in the use of reserves to sustain the program that we have, and that's a fundamental weakness of where we are right now relative to revenues and where we are going forward. But we want to make sure that in the budget process, we're understanding the long-term and short-term changes to the foundation aid formula, if there are any, and we are hopeful over the next several years, we'll see some change that would benefit Brighton in that regard, but unsure of what that will look like. We'd like to prepare and respond to continued pressure from inflation and labor shortages. In other words, making sure that we can compete in that marketplace while being aware of the inflationary pressures that people are facing, both on the employment side, but also in terms of our cost pressures internally. We'd like to make sure we can continue to support blueprint priority areas identified by our community, mental health and wellness, academic excellence, the family and student experience, and operations. We'd like to make sure that we're recognizing the current economic climate, changing student needs, and prioritizing resources to support our kids while finding opportunities to optimize resources, be as efficient as possible. Like to make sure we're looking at short and long-term priorities for investment in our facilities as well, which we will continue to do. And of course, we would like to continue to always comply with the New York State property tax gap and understand the long-term impact on financial planning, which we've talked quite a bit about in this process. In terms of the priorities and the feedback that we got from the community, it was clear to us that we needed to be responsible, respectful, and responsive. So responsible in terms of providing for the needs of students, responsible in terms of the cost to community members, respectful of their perspectives, and the feedback that we received and their concerns over the current state of taxes in town, we'll mention this a couple of times, and then responsive to that feedback and the incredible anxiety that people faced when they thought that the reevaluation would mean a significant change in their taxes. Bless you, Mr. Davis. That's not typically part of the presentation. We always say bless you, Mr. Davis, but there happened to be a sneeze for those that don't realize that who are just watching at home. Our strategic budget priorities, then, after all of that conversation along the way, minimizing our tax impact, being respectful of current financial conditions that everybody is facing, optimize current resources to preserve program, explore future options for fiscal sustainability, balance the immediate needs with long-term financial health, understanding the long-term impact of any financial decision we make in this budget process, and make sure that we're always engaging our stakeholders for and for in budget decisions. We have multiple budget forums, we have multiple opportunities for people to engage as well as gather feedback through the thought exchange that we put out very early in the process. The strategies that we decided to utilize to close the gap, the preliminary gap, were to, one, of course, explore whether or not the levy made sense. Should we look at going over the cap? It's highlighted and crossed out in red very specifically to make it clear to people that we are not, we are not, we are not proposing a budget that would exceed the property tax cap to gain revenue to support that budget. We did go ahead and reconcile categorical aids. In other words, maximize every opportunity to make sure that we were being reimbursed for what we had spent based on state funding formulas and to make sure all of those dollars were coming in. Evaluate short-term revenues, potential for investment income, utilize current resources as a temporary financing source. So that is the use of reserves. We also looked at ways to reduce expenditures, the current use of resources to purchase one-time expenses. One example for you would be classroom furniture, where we can, we know we need to replace, do we have year-end funds that we could utilize to do that? We would try and make some of those one-time purchases. Now, one of the dangers of that is then that impacts our ability to put money into reserve to offset taxes with reserves. So it's all Rubik's Cube that we need to continue to work with. Defer expenditures to future budgets, so just simply say we can't afford that now, we'll have to afford that in the future. Again, the risk to that is some of those expenses will only grow over time and we have an obligation to maintain our materials, our resources, our supplies, our facilities, et cetera, and can only defer things so long before that expense becomes even greater, no different than the things you defer in terms of your expenses at home. The roof doesn't get any better, you probably still have to replace it. In fact, it may only get more expensive to work through. So we're always aware of that. Not talking about us replacing a roof, but trying to compare it to a home. And reduce services or instructional release time as well. So we tried to keep, you can see it's the last item, reductions, any potential reductions as far away from student programming as possible and the offerings we're giving to kids, but that certainly was a consideration along the way. The executive budget as proposed right now increases spending 5.45% for a preliminary budget, being proposed at $110,572,957. It's an increase of $4.2 million in the operations area and $1.5 million in the capital area. That breaks down to an increase in salaries and wages, increasing 1.74%. So that doesn't mean that people in the district are receiving a compensation increase of 1.74%, it means spending in that area of the budget goes up 1.74%. Employee benefits will go up 8.71%. That's the variety of benefits that are paid for in that budget line. Health insurance, retirement system contributions that are mandated by the state, social security comes out of that line, any other compensation other than salaries would be in the benefit area. BOCs will go up 2.75%, supplies and services 4.83%, and the amount in the debt transfer line up 24%, a relatively small amount compared to the entire budget, but by percentage, a larger increase as well. And that is when we start to begin to pay off debt. Remember, there's a revenue that matches that in terms of state aid that offsets that particular expense. The other expenses do not have those same offsets necessarily. Where are we spending the money? So in other words, what parts of the budget? Well, a good three-quarters of what we're spending, if you think about it in terms of people, is where it's going. But we would equate people to program, that that's what we are. We are a people business, we should be investing in people, we should be spending on people. That is where people should, folks should see the majority of our spending. So whether that is in the teaching area, administrative area, instructional support, extracurricular, non-teaching positions that currently, of course, support our ability to offer a program, benefits payroll, benefits contractual, but also people in terms of the spending we do for most of the BOCs expense, which is again dedicated to program for students, paying for students to attend a particular program. Supplies and services, 16% is obviously necessary to offer the program to kids, and debt capital is just 7%. BOCs, all other would be some of the administrative costs that go along with that. So as you can see from that piece, that's a total of 27% between those three particular areas. The rest I would put in the category of people, but people because that's what supports program. We lean into that, we're not running away from that. We're saying we have to be spending that in order to offer the engaging, rigorous program that we do. Using revenues and reserves appropriately is a key to this. You'll see some of the highlights in red are important to point out, and the proportion to spending. We're seeing an increase of about $500,000 in the investment area. That's up significantly and allows for a about half a percent increase then in spending. We're also seeing an increase in foundation aid, I mentioned this before. We're now looking at that being about $760,000 or 3.86% in total. Some of that earmarked as well. That would allow for 0.73% in spending. The other state and federal aids will go up 1.21%, and that would be an increase, I'm sorry, they'll go up 13.6%, but an increase of 1.21%. Remember, those are largely reimbursables, so that's not this largesse of new funding. The only funding that really supports new program or new expense going into the next year would be foundation aid. So our subtotal of those sources is 3.57%. The use of reserves will go up about $250,000 in the appropriated fund balance, which is what we dedicated, appropriate directly towards the tax levy. We are recommending going up about $500,000 to close those gaps. And of course, then the property tax levy going up 2.03%, which is not exceeding the property tax cap. Again, very important to keep pointing that out. One of our challenges that we've mentioned over and over again, we'd like people to really understand this issue, because it will be an issue for us going forward, is the difference between the cost of doing business, the increased cost to do the work, and the increase in revenue, and the significant gap between those two things. The best way to explain is the Consumer Price Index, which is generally accepted as the measure in our economy for how much more it costs people to live, right? And the index includes items that are relative to what our grocery bills are, what our utility expenses are. Basically, the Consumer Price Index says this is how much more costs have inflated or the measure of inflation. And that right now is up 3.7%. And what we are proposing in terms of a tax increase is 2%. In other words, it's generally accepted that people's cost of living is going up 3.7%. If you walk into Wegmans, you go to buy a car, and forget about even for a second the conversation about tariffs and all those other issues in the economy, even before that, the general cost of living is up 3.7% to buy other services, and we're saying the cost to our local taxpayers is going up 2%. That is both something we think people should recognize relative to a big cost difference for this, but not for milk, not for eggs, not for the things you're buying in the store, which are going up faster, far faster than the expense here for such an important service you're purchasing, but also a long-term challenge because of this gap between what it is costing us and what we are charging people for that cost. Understanding that taxes are a challenge for people, taxes are high, we're not oblivious or obtuse to that, but this is this ongoing problem we'll have to address and figure out, because the cost of doing business is going up far faster than the revenues that are coming to the district. Even combined with the foundation aid increase, which is at about 3%, 3% foundation aid, which is the general aid for the increase in expense, and 2% in terms of foundation aid, nowhere near that 3.7% number, the regular cost of doing business that people are seeing everywhere else in their life. The property tax cap calculation is an algorithm provided by the state, a formula provided by the state, and again, this illustrates that, but this is the property tax cap calculation and the report card that goes out to our taxpayers, again, showing that it will be 2.03%. That's our capped number, but that would only allow for a 1.2% increase in spending, far lower again than the rate of inflation in terms of what our expense is going forward. So to accommodate for that, in terms of how did we reduce expenses, just to point out to you, from the 24, 25 adjusted budget to the totals in the far right column, 25, 26, in terms of the numbers of staff members and to point out the changes. Overall, in the teaching area, we're seeing a reduction of 1.5 positions. So from this year, a total again of 1.5 positions reduced in the teaching area. It's a combination of small parts of lots of positions for the most part. We've been able to do some of that through attrition, through specific positions where people are retiring or leaving, not reducing significantly to individuals going into next year. Any reduction to a person, though, is significant to them. I don't want to gloss over that, that is, but we're not seeing large-scale layoffs as part of the point. We're looking at 10.7 positions, a total of pieces of paraprofessional positions across the district, an addition of 0.62 positions in the school nurse area, and custodial maintenance down 0.5 positions. The total number of positions that change across the district staffing allocations is less 12.08 positions. And remember, there are reductions and then in some areas there are additions. For example, English has a new language, English language learners, there are additional positions. So those offset, and that's why we're at a total of less 1.5 positions, but 12.08 overall across the district in a variety of areas. Class size is always a question that people have, you know, going forward, and it is a priority in this community. It is also an area that has caused us difficulty and that we had to look at relative to still being able to offer program across the district. The changes for next year, we're looking at in kindergarten, still having 12 sections, in first grade, having 12 sections instead of 13. Again, a slightly, slightly, slightly smaller class anticipated. That class size will go from 19.7 to 20.8 anticipated. We'll have the same number of sections at second grade, but it's a reduction from that cohort leaving first grade to second grade. The average class size would be 22.5. In third grade, we would go from 11 sections to 13. Their cohort is going from 12 sections in second to 13. That will be 22.5, so we've had to add there. In fourth grade, we're going from 11 to 12. The cohort is also going up one section. The class size will be 21.4. And in fifth grade, we will go from 12 sections to 11, but that cohort is staying the same 11 sections as they leave fourth grade and go to fifth grade, and their class size average will be 22.1. The far right column shows you what would happen if we had to reduce by another teacher or add a teacher, how that would impact class size. That is just for people's reference when they walk through this information. We think it's really important to point out to people that what are you getting for the spending that you're doing, for what you're purchasing here in the district as a taxpayer? And we continue to believe deeply that people are receiving an outstanding experience for their investment. And for those without children in school, it is worth investing in our children at such a high level when they are getting this experience and having the outcomes that they are. Last year's graduation rate was 95%, 98% of our students receiving a Regents diploma, 66% with advanced distinction, and 76% of our students, I always think this is a very impressive number, receiving at least one AP class before they leave, which we know translates into a higher degree of success when kids leave us for post-secondary opportunities. And 88% of our students plan to attend a two- or four-year college. We are ranked number two district by the niche rankings in 2025, number two district in Rochester, named the Blue Ribbon School, of course, in 2018 at the high school, and the middle school is again re-designated as a school to watch in 2024. An incredible number of opportunities for kids on athletic teams and in the arts. We continue to excel in both areas. A huge number of clubs available and different opportunities for a wide variety of interests, and continuing to receive recognition, whether it's in the STEM areas, a top 500 STEM high school in 2020, and high rankings in each of those areas. All the way down to Council Rock is a habits of mind school of distinction in 2019. Our graduation and college readiness statistics, we think are also very impressive, especially when you look at the distance that we've come from 2013 with an 89% graduation rate, but fast forward to now, a 95% graduation rate. Most important to us is the change for particular subgroups of students went from 55 to 96 for African-American students, 78% for economically disadvantaged students in 2013, now to 85%, 65% for students with disabilities, now 83%. So really, done quite a bit to close the gaps, realizing that success and acknowledging that success for some kids is not success for the district. That is really about success for all students that we should be measuring ourselves by a wide variety of opportunities for all members of our school community to engage and be a meaningful contributor to and a part of our school community. And again, so many opportunities for kids to be a part of the club or activity that best suits them. That is what people are getting for their investment. Great opportunities, but really great outcomes as well. A quick word about the impact on tax rates and equalization. First of all, I can't emphasize this enough. I know I said at the beginning, one, we have nothing to do with assessments. Two, the assessments are on hold by the town indefinitely. Three, your taxes will not change based on your assessment, but rather based on the rate and the change going into next year that we still really don't know because of the, I don't want to say confusion, but the particular situation around where the assessments were heading. So it's very hard to tell right now what the equalization rate will be. The point for people in our community to really take home is whatever your taxes were last year, we are only collecting 2.03% more in real dollars. People can generally assume, generally assume that their taxes will go up about 2% from the year before. But overall, again, before the pause on equalization, it would have been 100%. The town of Pittsburgh is at 57%. And we're responsible for the tax levy, and we know the impact on homes matters, but we're not responsible for the assessments in any way. So that leaves a lot of question marks on the screen. We know right now that the Pittsburgh equalization rate will be 57%, so that's essentially the rate when different towns are assessed closer or further from full market value. The state has to apply a metric, so people are paying their fair share. We believe that will be 57% again in Pittsburgh, but where we can usually say, we think it'll be about this, will be about here, we still do not have those numbers and can't speak to those yet. But the impact on tax rates at this point, the equalization rate, that was with the full value. Right now, if we're thinking it's about 55%, so close to last year, we're looking at an impact of 2849 in terms of the rate per thousand, which means in Brighton, your taxes on a home value of $250,000, we can assume will go up $144. Again, these are estimates. You're proving a spending plan, that this is what we estimate as the tax increase. But because of the equalization rate with Pittsburgh, which saw larger increases in years past, a home value at $250,000 would see their taxes go up by $1, again, because that has to be equalized based on relationship to full market value. Total spending proposal again of $110,572,957 or up 5.45%. The levy then increasing 2.03%. We believe a solid, solid investment in mental health, wellness, academic excellence, family, student experience, operations, supporting our work in each of those areas, and that we've been able to minimize the tax impact as much as possible. We really need to be aware of this long-term issue, though, and ensure that we have the resources targeted to student needs, supporting our staff and meeting student needs, that we're maintaining fiscal stability, which we believe this does, and that we are, again, supporting our students and families by investing in programs and opportunities. Can I answer any questions for you?
I think you won't be able to answer this, but we do not have a sense yet for when we'll actually have an approved state budget, correct? Obviously, this is estimated, we're pretty comfortable with the estimate, but there's not right now the commitment from the governor and the legislature on when that budget will actually be approved, correct?
No, and actually, not telling Tales of School, this was published in a variety of media outlets. The governor said she is not concerned with how late it is, and they'll continue to work on it. They want to certainly get it right and continue to negotiate several items, but feels as though, in the governor's words, we will know what we need to know prior to the budget vote. So, you know, all we can do is simply be confident that at least the numbers that have been proposed at this point, which is what we've built the budget on, will be numbers we can count on going forward. But we are not anticipating, just in terms of the people that we talk to, that a state budget will be finalized anytime soon.
Do you have a sense of what the sticking points are?
So there are several, one of which I think not spoken very widely about is likely concern over federal funding, over Medicaid in particular, and the impact on the state budget and anxiety around that. But there are also a variety of non-education issues that are sticking points. You know, I think that there's a big discussion around what's called Article 78 language that the governor is using to... that the governor is using to develop essentially different policies and using policy language to create laws through the budget. And that is an age-old debate between particularly the Assembly. There's a lawsuit, Silver-
Versus Pataki.
Versus Pataki that goes back in time over this, and there's a lot of conversation with the current speaker, Carl Hasty, about that. So there are several of those sticking points. The only education issue which was really a sticking point was the bell-to-bell cellphone ban. It does sound, the way Speaker Hasty described it in the last couple of days at a press conference, as though they have essentially agreed to something resembling that, with, in his words, some tweaks to what was proposed by the governor. We don't know what those are, though. It doesn't sound as if education issues are what is holding up the state budget process at this point.
Thanks.
Thank you, Beth.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, Dr.
Budget hearing is on May thirteenth. The budget vote on the twentieth, right here in this building. No word yet on Kwanis food trucks, but as we always say, in the memory of great Brighton Teacher Association member, Teacher Gretchen Schaefer, former Kwanian, we hope you can come out and support it. Hopefully, it will happen, and we'll be raising money for kids to go to camp and other great causes. But also come and vote that day and be a part of the process. Thank you.
There is the opportunity to absentee ballot if you're not going to be in town, so those will be available also.
Yes, absentee ballots available. Thanks a lot, much to Lou for his leadership in getting us through this process and to this point, for all of our budget makers in the room, for the work that they do to get us here, and your guidance representing the community along the way. Much appreciated. Thanks.
If there are no questions, I will put forward an approval of the resolution for the adoption of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget and the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six property tax report card.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are approved. Now on to the reports section. First, you've had the chance, we are responsible to approve the financial reports we have received. You've got both the executive budget summary status report, period ending two twenty-eight, twenty-five, and also the treasures report, period ending two twenty-eight, twenty-five. Any questions with regards to those financial reports? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Student representative, Dagney.
Hi. So for academics, the fourth quarter starts tomorrow, which is also the last quarter. The SAT boot camp is going to take place April twenty-second through twenty-fourth at BHS. For sports, JV, varsity, and modified spring sports have all just started. And last Friday, we had our last sports assembly to honor our spring athletes. For clubs, Friends of Rachel had a March Madness mixer on March nineteenth, where students played board games and ate donuts. The Galaxy Literary Magazine held its annual soiree, March twenty-first. And the Brighton math team came in third place in the division after this whole year. And they're also sending four students to the New York State Math League meet. For executive council, we held our elections for next year's council, so those results are already in. And we've just been working on for our Spring Fest and the Faculty Talent Show, which is going to take place after the APs in May. Other than that, Council Rock Primary School is having its annual ice cream social today until Thursday. Brighton Believes Day took place March thirteenth, where students completed numerous service projects and was very successful. Class of two thousand twenty-seven had a Chipotle fundraiser on March nineteenth. The BHS Counseling Department held its counseling night to share information to parents about senior year, college, career search, and like the college admissions review. And for all of April, all the DCSD buildings are holding a Brighton Your Wardrobe Spring Clothing Drive.
Thank you very much. Monroe County School Board Association, the three different meetings, district operations. I did happen to attend that one back on March twenty-sixth. We had a demonstration of the new voting machines from the Monroe County Board of Elections. Will be the voting machines we are using for our election on May twentieth. There'll be a representative from the Monroe County Board of Elections at every location that's using the new machines. They look great. They look very straightforward, so excited to see that. They are in no way, shape, or form, and this was emphasized a number of times, connected to the internet in any way, shape, or form. They are standalone machines. So we had a good demonstration on that and went from there. Information exchange.
That is Esther and I. We both share a committee work for that. In this past month, they just did an overview of what makes an effective board and efficient strategies to run a board smoothly, especially in some uncharted waters. So, that's it. And we have another meeting tomorrow.
Great. Legislative.
As is our tradition in April, which should be our last meeting of the year, we invited Regents Hale and Norwood to join us to give us an overview of the work that they do. It was a very well-attended meeting. We had a large number of superintendents, representation from, I think, seventeen of our twenty-one districts. The Regents had a lot to say about the current situation at the federal level and not as many details to say as about the Blue Ribbon Committee and graduation requirements. So we had a long discussion about how everybody feels about that sense of being in flux. Christina and Eleanor were with me. I don't know if you want to add anything about the meeting in particular?
I think the message that I took is to try and see through some of the noise, to be patient and kind of wait for the message as all of this is sorted out legally and otherwise, but that there's a lot of noise around us right now and that we need to wait for the noise to subside to find the message within. I think was one of the big takeaways I took. It was a great meeting.
Yeah, I'm always grateful that they're both so willing to give their time to us, to help us understand what their work entails. It looks like we will be meeting again in May. I don't have a date yet. A, because we don't have a budget, and B, because we don't really understand what's happening at the federal level. So I'll report back sometime in there.
And I think I heard maybe the meeting you and I were, maybe it was district steering, we already have a date for the legislative breakfast in twenty-six.
We do. Don't ask me what it is right now, but I can tell you it's the first Saturday in February. We will have student voice again. That meeting's always well-attended. We've changed the venue to CCR, to Country Club of Rochester, so that we have more room for folks to attend and can spread out a little bit more than we can at Shadow Lake. But I always appreciate the folks at Monroe County School Board for giving us access to folks like the Regents and our legislators.
Great. Next report from Monroe One Boses. And Mark Kokonovich, our former board president, is our representative to Monroe One Boses. I'll just do a quick summary. They're also going through their twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budgets covering transportation, administrative expenses, and capital projects. They were approved by the Monroe One Boses Board of Education. Their annual meeting was held on April third, and their budget was presented. Procedures were outlined. Districts will vote on the two thousand twenty-five, and this is a later item on our agenda tonight, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, Monroe One Boses Administrative Budget nominees for three appointments to the Monroe One, and I'll do those in the future agenda item at this meeting here. And they've approved E-Rate reimbursement on component districts and noted that some of us are familiar with Amy West from One Hundred and Eighty-Five Limes, Monroe One Boses Board of Ed member, Amy West. Again, One Hundred and Eighty-Five Limes was recently honored and recognized by the New York State Legislature Women's Caucus as part of the Women's History Month celebrations in Albany for her exceptional leadership, advocacy, and support for public education and her role as a business owner and community leader. So as always, we are grateful for Mark's service in our community, representing us on the Boses Board. PTSA, Dr. Castillo.
All right, so we'll start with Council Rock Primary School. Council Rock hosted a successful Fun Food Friday on March twenty-first. Looking ahead, students participated in Brighton Believes Day, during which students would write letters to younger classmates. Other upcoming events include the Open House and Book Fair starting in April and a Bus Driver Aid and Appreciation Day. Looking at French Road Elementary School, March events at French Road include a Fun Food Friday on March twenty-first and Brighton Believes Day on March twelfth. For Brighton Believes Day, they had a macaroni and cheese drive benefiting Racha Chao. The March seventeenth staff meeting featured St. Patrick's Day-themed snacks. Thanks to Liz Riordan for arranging that event. In the coming weeks, students can place their yearbook orders with April eleventh as the final deadline. The school will also host a third-grade ice cream social on May first and a color run on May sixth, taking place from five to seven p.m. The fourth and fifth grade chorus concerts scheduled on May eighth and fifteenth respectively will also feature an ice cream treat. Twelve Corners Middle School, one hundred and sixty-two students attended the seventh-grade activity night. Thank you to Jennifer A. and Stacy D. for sharing the event on February twenty-eighth. For Brighton Believes Day, students had a chance to celebrate with their pen pals from the Jewish Home, Gables, Legacy, and Vallet Valley Manor. On March seventeenth, the PTSA provided hospitality for the faculty meeting. Thank you to Lindsay K. for helping with that event. You can find pictures for both of those events in the accompanying report. Finally, to the high school, all right, so now one other one. So going down to the high school, Brighton High School participated in Brighton Believes Day as well by sending thank you to individuals who serve the Brighton community, as well as letters to students at Council Rock. The PTSA also provided hospitality for their faculty meeting on March seventeenth. Additionally, the PTSA representatives from Twelve Corners Middle School and the high school met with the principal on March nineteenth to discuss LineWise, a digital tool aimed at classroom management and content filtering. The PTSA ended March with a staff appreciation lunch, and you can find pictures for that event as well. And finally, for reports and committee news, the PTSA's fundraising efforts continue with a silent auction scheduled for the end of April.
Thank you very much. I made a mistake. I jumped over two pieces, so I didn't forget you, Jamie, and many of Nicole. But I got to finish with other board member reports, and as our practice, I'll start at the end of the table and work this way, so I apologize to everyone.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
And continuing that trend, nothing to report.
March thirteenth, Curriculum Council met. We are continuing our deep dive into exploring artificial intelligence and its effect on our students, our teachers, and our school education system in general. And that's been very interesting. And on March twenty-seventh, the school equity-based team for Brighton High School met, and we are continuing our deep dive into our exploration of our students having a sense of belonging. And we are going to give another survey to them and with more of a fine-tuned questionnaire. And hopefully, we will be able to assess that information and improve the sense of belonging of our students.
Thank you.
I met with Twelve Corners School-Based Equity Team. Our deep dive is into student discipline. That work continues. And then, because my number hasn't been called yet for jury duty, I can go to the PTSA meeting tomorrow, so I'll tell you about that next month.
Do you want to talk about district steering?
Monroe County School Board Association? We've, Larry and I both attended Monroe County School Boards Association Steering Committee. We sit on that. I think you're the member-at-large, correct? And I'm the legislative co-chair. We talked about the budget for next year for that particular group. It's kind of like, steering committee is hard to get your hands around. It's almost like a PTSA meeting, like we have to, we're approving their work, right? So there are reports from all of the different committees, legislative, district reparations, information exchange. We went over the budget for next year. It's kind of housekeeping sort of work.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report?
Christina.
I don't either. I have a couple coming up.
Although, just, as is always the case, a lot of construction work coming up. But sort of in an illustrative way, I had the chance to sit and look at some of the work that needs to get done at Council Rock. And the discussions today were about looking at estimates and costs and trying to figure out what impact tariffs might have on that. But it's for something to then go to SED that would then potentially be bid in March of twenty-six, that would maybe be completed in July of twenty-six, and we're discussing it in April of twenty-five. So that's how these timelines work a lot. And kudos to Lou and a number of the buildings folks. I think we call attention to them a lot, but it's impossible to call attention to them too much because they do such great work. John DeValley and his entire team, so appreciative of their work. It's baseball season, so I'll note that Jamie Porter has kindly offered to pinch-hit for Nicole Yurus, who is doing, I think, an ice cream social or something tonight.
You are correct. Wow, what a transition, so.
Can count on Larry.
Thank you for allowing me and Nicole to come every single time we have a board meeting. From my understanding, you have like the pictures in front of you, my jobs to go through quickly, so thank you. We're just going to showcase some of the wonderful things that our students and our teachers are doing in the classroom. So at Council Rock, so there are the school counselors have been pushing into some classrooms, talking about some very important safety things with our students and having some great conversations and lessons with that. So also, there's a cool erosion project going on, Michelle Orvick's room, so it looks, I only have black and white. It kind of looks like cake a little bit, so I don't know if I-
It's sand.
Is it sand?
It's sand.
Yeah, I figured, so it sounds like a pretty, pretty nice science project there at Council Rock. So over at Fraz, we have some very talented musicians here practicing outside. It was a little warmer a little while ago than today, but they're playing the Starspanning Banner at the Red Wings game, so they're getting some good practice in. It's always a great, great show by our students there. We have some other students doing some amazing ceramics in art, working hard. We have some students doing a chalk talk, and thanks for the custodial staff. So it's not really a chalk. They're writing on the floor with dry erase markers, but I don't think there's anything that rhymes well with dry erase marker. But I think it's kind of a unique way for them to do some ELA work and some literacy work in there. So there's a couple pictures of them doing that. And then, this very cool project going on for third graders in extended studies. They are kind of like making new planets and kind of describing what those are and doing some projects around what life on those planets would be. I guess some of them are gassy, so some big gas giants in there and some rocky ones. I'm almost going on with that one that like a piece is coming out. I think that's like the inside core they're really working on. So some really innovative things by those students. And the fourth grade students are making time-travel machine prototypes in their extended studies, which is, I think, a classic egg drop where they have to drop the egg. But I just wanted, you know, Kevin and maybe Lou, this is coming your way. We're putting in a request for a DeLorean and some plutonium for this project, so I just want to make sure there's room in the budget for that.
I'll look at that.
Gotcha, gotcha. So I'll take care of the flux capacitor, yeah.
No requisition, a red fastener.
And that's how we know you're all of a certain age.
Yes.
It could go on.
Yeah, we have an over and under bet with Bill about when I'm going to finish, so. And then, there's a-
Already warm.
We got some snapshots here of just like what a day in Fraz looks like, and a lot of kids having fun. I know Cedric and Will are doing some great things in Fizzad and a lot of kind of like music work. And there's a lot of pictures of how we focus on students, a lot of one-on-one and small group opportunities. Those are really important, especially for some kind of revision or some extra help for those students. And it's really what makes things special when we can do that and spend time with our students. So there's a couple pictures going on there, as well as some of our academic support instructors doing some of that, their important work at Fraz. And the fifth grade band had the opportunity to go to TCMS, which was great. And they got to talk about what it means to be in band at TCMS and to hear from those students and play with those students, which is kind of a really great opportunity and to meet some students who might still be there the next year or two that they'll be playing with. And also at TCMS, there's a couple pictures. We have, apparently, the Elkins are really lobbying for all their clubs this month. But so, their middle school Science Olympiad team placed fourth in their regionals. They just went the other day to compete against forty schools in the New York State competition. I did not hear how well they did, but it's pretty great to have these young middle school students doing some really cool science and technology and engineering stuff, so in Science Olympiad. And then also, just to kind of showcase what amazing cultural diversity we have in our community and what we have in our schools, a couple slides for this. But we have a new student from Brazil who, during some wind time, shared with some students about what life was like where she grew up in Brazil. And it's just kind of, when you, you know, walk into TCMS and see all those flags about where our students are from, it really is an amazing place where we live, our community and our schools. And there's actually a picture of those flags on the next page where we have a teaching resident in, and he played a little bagpipes for some of the students on St. Patrick's Day, so. And then, we also, in the N.L. department, they're working in conjunction with the Warner School. And some students from the Warner School came in to talk about, to do a little Chinese club presentation and things like that, to learn about some cultures there. And then, the second Elkins group, they also run the E-three club, and they had their students do a competition with some robot- do a competition with some robots that they built, and they had to move some pucks, which were just kind of bottle cap stuff around, but our students came in first and third in the competition, RIT, which is pretty cool. They got to take a picture with one of those Boston Dynamic dog robots, which is cool, but a little sketchy if I can add that. It's incredible what Boston Dynamics does with those things, but they're interesting. And then, also a little gym class physical education stuff going on, so they've been doing a little CrossFit here and there, and I find this unbelievable that one of the students in his class is close to the world record for bench presses for his age group. So I can't relate to that, but I can relate to the next one, where multiple students have had their first pull-up and handstands for the year, so I can, I can work with a single pull-up. That's my lane.
Good.
And then, again, there's just a whole bunch of snapshots of some of the things that are, that are going on at TCMS that follows. There are some more things going on during Wynn, so where we, there was kind of a presentation about the Hindu festival, Holi, so which is the, where they kind of throw the colored powder and stuff like that. We avoided that. They brought in colored scarves, which I think everyone appreciated from the custodial staff, that that was the alternate. And then finally, some BHS stuff. So two of our students, I am not going to do well with the last names, so I'm going to skip those, but Peter and Gabe have qualified for the all eastern symphonic band, and what that means is that's open to the entire northeastern United States.
That's a good deal.
Yeah, yeah. It's huge. So, and it's just really, and Gabe is in one of my classes and a fantastic student around, but just what a remarkable, you know, just accolade for those two gentlemen who are doing great in that. And then also, on the other side, Phoebe and Samantha, two other students, are in the Senior High Honor Band, which is part of the twenty-twenty-five New York State Band Directors Association. So again, it's just a great honor for those two students and just wonderful musicians, and it's just fantastic for the opportunities that we have from the clubs that we offer. I know that you've been around, but it's just so great to have these extracurriculars to what we do in class and also what we do in the arts. It's just a, just a great place to be. So one of our new clubs, the Latino Student Union, was doing a community service project, so they threw some pictures in. They're working with Lifespan, which works with adults in the community. And then the final couple ones, so John Clements just threw out a little picture about what their AP world is doing, and this is kind of finishing this up and getting ready for the AP exams that are right around the corner, so he was doing some work in the large group room. And then, a couple other things is that for, in the high school, the math team placed third in our division this year, so unfortunately, behind both Pittsburgh schools. We'll work on that, so I think that has been a long-time rivalry here, so, but you know, third place is excellent and the students did really well, but one of the big things is that we had the number-two senior in the county, so Jonathan Harrow qualified for that, and Asher Clark, or Claire, I'm sorry, I don't know that name, but he came as the number-three sophomore in the county, so we really have some extremely talented students operating in all sorts of these, you know, in math and science and the arts. And then, we had a very cool field trip that the art, the AP art and advanced art classes went to in Buffalo. They went to the ATG Art Museum and went on a field trip and saw some really neat things there. And again, just want to thank the board for the support for field trips and the electives that we have and all the extracurriculars and sports and the wonderful things that our students do. And as I finally near the last couple, the Teen Institute Club put on a program, which is, that's a club at the high school, put in a program for fifth graders, and we had students come over and they gave me a little quiz about what type of leader they are, and then they did a kindness activity, but the whole point was to make sure that every kid sees themselves as a leader and that they have different skills that are leadership skills in different places, that a leader is not just one kind of like generic description, that everyone has a place to lead and that everyone can make positive change. And then finally, Lance Mitchell did a big board game club, so a lot of wholesome quality fun hanging out, and a lot of students doing that after school, and there's just a couple pictures for there, and got a couple kids playing cards. I hope they're playing pitch and they can teach Dr. Hall a few pitch skills. He needs that work, so, and that's all we got there.
We appreciate you pinch-hitting for Nicole tonight, and as always, pictures are fantastic, nothing better than watching, as you pointed out, kids in activities, being engaged and having fun and some of those things, Jamie, so thank you very much.
Thank you again for having me.
Yep.
And for the community, this is posted, correct?
It is correct. It's on the, it's on the school website, so you're able to see all of these pictures. Yeah, that's a good point, thank you. Dr. McGowan?
Few items very quickly. One, I'm not sure if you heard, but the budget will be voted on in the meeting.
It will?
Seven to nine in this building. Come for the food trucks and the vote. As you heard, Dagney gives really great updates, as did both the PT and the PTSA, so thank you for that, but sometimes I end up repeating Dagney's very specifically, and she does it way better. Spring sports, of course, started and lots of fun out there. It's not quite the right weather yet, but we're getting there. People are really patient and a lot happening on the arts side as well, and concerts are beginning, so really exciting to be at that point and the fourth quarter beginning also. But more important than any of those things at this point, I just would like to certainly say even a bar for our friends and neighbors who just finished their month of Ramadan, happy Passover to those celebrating coming up, as well as happy Easter. We hope everybody has a great, safe, restful, and enjoyable break with family and friends, which is of course next week. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, I referred to this before, we've got this year's resolution to both nominate candidates to the BOCES Board of Education and also approving their Monroe One, or voting to approve rather, their annual election and budget vote, as referred to earlier. I'll mention the name of the three individuals. There's three seats open, there's three people running currently in those seats and running for their seats again, but it's David Brian Buttram from Roche Henrietta, it's Kim McCloskey from Pittsburgh, and Rebecca Hicks from East Rochester. We addressed the budget piece before. I'll do these as two separate resolutions, first for the three candidates. Motion to approve the nomination of these three candidates to the BOCES Board of Education.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Susan. Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution, move forward for the Monroe One BOCES annual election and budget vote.
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second?
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is the word I cannot say, so I'll look at you in a second. This is the approval of the amended settlement recommendation memorandum between the Country Club of Rochester versus Town of Brighton Tax.
Sir Shari.
Proceeding. Questions? Pretty smooth.
If you could just go real fast, Sir Shari.
Yeah, yeah. We've talked about this a couple times before, is there anything you want to add to this?
No, I mean, just for people to understand, tax, these claims are, and we have a reserve that covers these claims as well, but these claims are when people essentially challenge their assessment and what they've been taxed, and it's a process that they go through, have a right to go through that, and we work through that with whatever entity in this. This is not uncommon. I suppose them being on the agenda and us approving or getting to this point, doesn't happen all the time, so it's worth reminding people, but this is just the result of a long process of working through a settlement in that process.
Okay. Questions from the board? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Carrie Lynn?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move forward with the consent agenda, which includes approval of personnel changes, recommendations from the Committee on Special Ed, and the Committee on Preschool Education, a number of different fundraising activities, get your cars cleaned, get your bellies filled, so a number that are listed here. We've got field trip approvals.
I just have two items on the personnel agenda, I'd like to make.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
You asked me about that. Let me stop right there and we'll go back to our first item, which is the personnel agenda, and give Dr. McGowan a chance to say something, I apologize.
No, that's no problem. Well, there are two items. One, certainly joyful, that we would like to celebrate the appointment and the recommendation to you of Amanda Masters as our new middle school assistant principal coming to us from Bloomfield, most recently in Palma, before that. Outstanding educator and leader, great reputation, incredible references. Committee was very high on her as well, just did an outstanding job throughout the process, so we're very excited about her joining us. But on the more mournful side, we do want to take a moment to recognize a staff member who has passed away, one of our food service employees, Pam Machalski, and ask for you to just join us in a moment of silence before we move on to the agenda. Thank you. Our thoughts, of course, continue to be with her family and all of her colleagues who certainly miss working with her and are thinking about her each and every one. Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited about Amanda. We had a chance to meet her just as we were walking into this meeting. Acknowledge Carrie Lynn for participating in that interview process. Thank you very much for taking the time to be able to do that. Thank you. Oh, we talked about fundraising activities and field trip approvals. They're on the agenda. We have one gift, and as is our practice, we will read that gift. "A gift from Palmer Foods Service of five cases of peanut butter and three cases of jelly for Brighton High School Brighton Believes Service Project." I would like to acknowledge, and I don't know if Dr. Hall, this is for the, is it the Natural Helpers who make peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for?
Friends of Rachel.
Friends of Rachel, I'm sorry.
And all of the seniors.
Okay.
They come together.
And make those.
And other hungry students.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the cons, I'm sorry, any questions with regards to the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we adjourn, just thanks as always to Asher, Bill, and Mike, killer bill. A quick note, had a chance to be at the Brighton Rotary fundraiser on Friday night, and shout-out to Sarah Stabell and the group of our students from French Road Middle School and High School and all who came and performed, did instrumentals. We had possibly a singer from a board member coming for a couple of the a cappella groups, but just really amazing to watch all these different students, so supremely talented, just did a great job at the Rotary event, so grateful for them. Spring break next week, as you pointed out, on April twenty-ninth, which is the Tuesday after the break, will be our next meeting. Anything else for the good of the order?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?